This meeting is being recorded.
I think it's a contest now, who remembers? All right, first, so call this meeting to order June 2nd, 7:01 PM. And first order of business is Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic. For which we stand. Under God, and the visual with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you.
And then Mayor, if I may, real fast.
Yes.
I guess we could take a roll call, but the two, 10.1, 10.2, they have asked if they could go sooner if possible, so I'm just asking if that's your prerogative to.
Yeah, I would be happy. Let's move them up to before 9.1. And is that the, both of them, 10.1 and 10.2?
Yes, and I believe they're both, somebody from both events is on line.
Great, okay. Counselors, any additions, corrections, or adjustments other than the one Chief Martin just gave us?
Oh, can we get a roll call real quick? I think we forgot to do that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
That's my fault.
My fault. Jackie, will you do a roll call?
Yeah, Counselor Kenyon.
Here.
Mayor Hollitt.
Here.
Counselor Whitney. Counselor Bjornson.
Here.
Counselor Hooker.
Here.
Counselor Sledoff.
Now.
Counselor Coker.
Here.
Thank you. Any additions, corrections, or adjustments to the agenda, counselors or Chief Martin?
I have a few when you're ready.
Go ahead.
I have three. One, to discuss the public safety fee for the current year. Two is, I'd like to request to volunteer to help update something on the website.
Okay.
And the third one is a status update on the audit.
Okay, got it. Any else? All right. We'll go into public comment, and Kevin, you said you don't have anyone there at City Hall?
No, no, no citizens at City Hall, ma'am.
Okay. So we're going to call for public comment in the Zoom audience, and by doing that, just go ahead and raise your little emoji hand. And if you can't find that, just go ahead and unmute yourself and let us know your name and your address.
This is Pat Waldenski. It looks like there's a couple other people trying to get into the meeting here.
And I sent an email to City Administrator.
Yeah. It's down to the Zoom meeting just a few minutes ago, so. So if you could check into that, that'd be great. And also, I have a public comment whenever you're ready for that.
Okay, one minute. Jackie, can you see if anyone's pending to try to get into the meeting? And then go ahead with your public comment. Patrick?
Excuse me, Mayor?
Yeah.
Bobby is checked in now.
Okay.
Yep, I'm here, sorry.
Thank you. Okay, so public comment. Patrick, go ahead. State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Okay, my name's Pat Waldenski. I live at 484 East First, here in Oak Ridge. And I've got a few things I wanted to say about what's going on with this public safety fee. And just the overall management of the city seems to me that the city is just really desperately needs help. It would appear to me that none of the city council, nobody really in charge of anything seems to have really any idea what they're doing. I have been having some correspondence with Heather Buck, County Commissioner, about, you know, what's going on here with the budget and the nepotism and all the things that are going on. And she assures me she's following things closely. Another big thing is what's with the past meetings? So we're going on three months of meetings. A month, so that's a quarter of a year of, I know, minutes of meetings. Not quite sure why that is. Also, in regards to the fire department, took a walk by there in the area the other day, and I noticed that that place looks abandoned, the firehouse. It looks abandoned. There's weeds coming up out of every crack. Grass is nine feet tall out there. I was a firefighter for the government for like 15 years, and you go to any fire shop anywhere, you're gonna find one looking like that. And I figure since you guys occupy like 40% of the, you know, huge budget, you're well over a million dollars for four years. The least you could do is, you know, get the weeds and stuff out of the sidewalks and things like that. Another I had was in a budgetary realm. I was just curious as to why the Oak Ridge Fire Department is budgeted $180,000 something dollars for seasonal workers. I was really unsure of that. Also, in regards to fire department spending, I'm also kind of confused as to why this ambulance gets allowed a nearly $500,000 a year, right? Last three years, it's got $485,000 or $65,000. So, but it's the same ambulance. So last I checked, pretty sure ambulance doesn't cost, you know, would it get it, would he get a new amb- a couple of years or, so I'm not really quite sure where over a million dollars in three years went for an ambulance. Very confusing. I'm really unsure of a lot of these budgetary items. I've heard of the cities buying a new excavator, selling property out at the industrial park, you know? But then, on the other hand, there's never any word of any revenue for any fire department revenues that were brought in through insurance repayments, reimbursements, private bill collections. There seems to be no funds reimbursed. And just some other facts and figures which are beyond the scope of this talk would be just the general accounting for the fire department, who signs the time sheets, what the standby rate is.
All right, that's your three minutes. Thank you, Patrick. Is there any more citizens? Patrick mentioned that there was some in the waiting room, waiting to speak.
Is that okay from the top?
Hi.
Okay, and state your name.
I actually sent an email earlier today.
Damn, I actually, so first thing you need to do is state your name.
Dana Hancock.
Okay, and then you have three minutes and your address?
76276 Garden Road, and I sent an email today that was not answered.
Okay, go ahead.
That was supposed to be public comment, so I wasn't trying to speak because the last time I spoke, you guys said my name wrong, and then I had people actually talking very poorly about me. And that they didn't want to hear me. So I don't have a lot of confidence talking in these kind of situations. And so I sent an email, and that is not being read or recognized. And it mainly was about how the fire department is ran as a 501(c). Is the fire department ran as a nonprofit?
No.
Why on the Facebook does it say that?
It's the volunteers.
Why are volunteers that the city pays for out of tax dollars being ran under a nonprofit, and how does that benefit the city? Because that doesn't seem correct, that our tax dollars are being put into a nonprofit when it should be a for-profit situation because our tax dollars are paying for this service. So I just want the public to know that our tax dollars are being put into a nonprofit, apparently. And we are being forced to pay a public safety fee that is being put into a nonprofit. So, thank you. Bye.
Thank you. Trudy Hammond, go ahead. State your name and address, and you have three minutes.
Trudy Hammond, 76349 Lamont Way. Still getting used to saying that. Well, I was in response to that. I believe the city of Oak Ridge is actually a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). And that's my way of, that's what was my impression, so I didn't, I don't know what, where the 501(c)(3) would come from other than it being the city as a whole is a nonprofit from, I believe what Mr. Ketchin said at one point. Thank you.
Thank you, Trudy.
You muted, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Sledoff. Looks like, Trudy, could you take your hand down, and the next person for public comment would be Catherine Abbott. If you could state your name and address, and you have three minutes as well.
My name is Catherine Abbott, and I reside at 48162 on East First Street. I'm a representative of the Oak Ridge High School senior class. And the senior class is wanting to continue a popular tradition where we ride alternate vehicles to the school on our last day, such as golf carts or quads. But in order to drive these types of vehicles, we would have to have acquired a parade permit. And we are wanting to get this parade permit for June 8th. And we want to start our parade around 8:20 AM, depending on our school buses, because of our route. And our route plan is to start behind the track and travel behind both of the schools, high school and elementary. And then traveled down East First Street into the high school parking lot and end there. And we have eight volunteers to block off intersections for.
Hey Catherine, I hate to interrupt you, but you are actually on our agenda, so your time is just a couple sections forward. So if you could just hold that thought, I want to make sure that you get your proper time that's on here. So let me just take a minute and finish public comment, and I'll come right back to you. Thank you, though. You're doing a really good job.
My apologies, thank you.
No worries. It looks like one more person in public comment, and Dan Barclay, if you could state your name and address, and you as well have three minutes.
Dan Barclay, 47501 Highway 58. First of all, thank you, Chief Martin, for actually holding up a flag during the Pledge of Allegiance so that people actually can look at a screen and face the flag when they're reciting, if they even bother to stand up, the Pledge of Allegiance. So, the second, a few things annoy me worse than people presenting fallacy as fact. Just to clarify for a couple of the other comments. I heard the term nepotism during the budget process. First off, there is no nepotism. Everybody that has a potential or actual conflict of interest, if you pay attention to the budget meetings, declares that actual or potential conflict of interest and does not vote on the budget, does not vote. Check the record. Check your tax. As far as nine-foot weeds, first off, there aren't any nine-foot weeds. Second off, if they are in the sidewalk, they are in ODOT's sidewalk, not city sidewalk, not the fire department sidewalk, not my sidewalk that I just finished cleaning. Because ODOT doesn't do it. Technically, you're not supposed to. Let them take exception to me doing their job instead of waiting on them doing their job. There's a lot of fallacy. And to tag along on Trudy's comment a little bit, when you think about it, Oak Ridge as a city is a nonprofit. All government is a nonprofit, because guess what? They do not generate revenue. They collect revenue and redistribute it, but they do not generate it. So government is a nonprofit organization, if you think at the big picture. They don't, they don't make money, they don't, they, they collect it and redistribute it. And that's all they do. That's what government does. But if all these people know so damn much about the budget, I think there's a couple empty seats that need filling. If you're well versed, get your ass in there and do it. And that's all I had to say. I hate fallacy presented as fact, because guess what? It's social media. If people read it on Facebook or hear it at a council meeting or hear it on Facebook, well, it must be true. Yep, I guess so. Anyhow, that's all I had to say. I hadn't planned on speaking, but I needed to address.
Thank you, Mr. Barclay. Is there anyone else in for public comment? All right, not seeing anyone else for public comment. Next thing up on the agenda is mayor comments and announcements. I don't have any comments or announcements. Counsel, do you have any comments or announcements?
Seen something on, excuse me, always mayor.
Let's go. Counselor Kenyon has her hand raised up. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to answer a few of the comments that were made during public comment.
Go ahead.
I have to apologize that I wasn't able to get the notes down on everything that Mr. Waldenski was inquiring about. But I wanted to make a couple comments on his first. First off, budget season is in progress right now, and all those meetings are on the same way that a council meeting is, they're on Zoom, so we do allow public comment at those meetings, and that's the perfect place to ask questions about the budget. I would answer all of them right now, but like I said, I wasn't able to make notes on all the questions that you had. So I'd also like to offer, if you would like to contact me personally, I would be happy to answer all of your questions, to the best of my knowledge, outside of a budget meeting. But also, you're welcome to come, and, you know, the council and committee can address all those questions. Secondly, oh, I did, I did make a note on the seasonal workers, and I just wanted to explain really quick on that, that the, this, it's written as a seasonal worker, but the actual explanation for who those people are, they're called part-timers. We hire a, we use a temp service out of the Eugene or Springfield area that has qualified firefighter, paramedic-type people that are signed up through that temp service. And to fill shifts on our, in our fire department, we use them instead of our paid staff because it's impossible to use our paid staff to cover the department 24 hours a day, seven days a week, with the small amount of staff that we have. So it actually costs us a lot less money to pay them than it does to, to pay for a paid staff person. And anyway, I'd be happy to go over all of that with you at any time outside of the meeting. As far as the comment, I didn't catch the woman's name, and I apologize for that, that it was a computer cutting out issue. But a woman was talking about tax money being put into a nonprofit in the, in the fire department, and I'm pretty absolutely positive that that's not true. All the money that is spent in the fire department is revenue that's either generated by the ambulance service or it's through grants or transfers from the tax revenue that the city receives to pay for those funds. My guess would be if the volunteers have their own nonprofit, they run that completely separately from the city. Whatever generated revenue they bring in, they keep in their own account somewhere, and it has nothing to do with city money. Just so you know, and, and I would also be happy to go over the budget with you if you would like more definitions or explanations about things. And also, just for Trudy's benefit, Dan kind of answered this, but I don't believe the city is a 501(c)(3). I could verify that, but I'm pretty sure they're not. But we are a government entity which qualifies us to be that we don't pay tax on the money that we receive. We pay it out to run the city, and it's, it's just governmental status qualifies us for that, for that ability. I don't think it has anything to do with being a 501. So I'm sure that maybe if someone needs a legal definition, I could also dig that up. But that's all I had.
Thank you, Counselor Kenyon. I appreciate that. Go ahead, Counselor Sledoff.
Okay, I was wondering, was you gonna say anything about fireworks this year?
The Fourth of July Festival?
Yes, ma'am.
No, that's not a part of my mayor job.
Well, okay.
There is a permit, but I believe, Kevin, it's not on this agenda, correct?
No, it's not.
No, it's, it's, it's not on this agenda.
Okay. If you have any other questions, we're talking probably about the permit at the next meeting, but no, I didn't have anything for tonight's meeting. It is happening, though.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Sledoff. I just want to make one comment about the, the Fire Department's Volunteer Association. They do have a volunteer association. It is, as Counselor Kenyon stated, exactly right. It is a small separate entity. And they do small fundraisers like pancake breakfasts, free breakfasts for Veterans Day, things like breakfast for Santa Claus, small open houses, and they have a very, very small amount of money, and they do things like small scholarships for high school students. They buy uniform t-shirts for their volunteers. Very small things like that. It has nothing to do with the city fire department and how it operates. Is there any more counselor comments? All right, so business from the city council. Let's go ahead and go back to Catherine Abbott. Thank you so much for your speech. I think we can kind of pick up where you left off unless counselors would like you to start over again.
I'm all right with either or.
Okay, so yours is 10.1. And Kevin, is that? Yeah, go ahead. Did you have a screen share for that?
I can go ahead and start with that. Can you, I'm gonna.
You know?
I've never done it myself, so I don't know how to do it.
All right, Jackie is gonna pull it up, because for some reason it's not letting me screen share my screen here. Do you want me to go ahead, Mayor, while the assistant recorder is trying to bring that up?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
Mayor, council, and citizens, there's a request for council action for city street usage for class of 2022. The subject is the Oak Ridge class of 2022 is requesting a usage of the road for their last ride to school. The Oak Ridge High School class 2022 would like to request the use of non-street legal vehicles and possibly delay of normal traffic flow for their customary last ride to school. And then she's gonna be bringing it up. The staff recommends acceptance of the motion by the council, and I'll have the recorder. So that, there is a recommended motion there. Staff recommends the council pass the motion, and it's kind of a twofold thing. It's not really a road closure, because they're not asking to close the road. It could possibly just delay traffic. The city staff is fine with that. And then also, the use of some non-street legal vehicles, and the city council is the road authority, so the city council has to approve that type of thing. But staff is good with all, all the things they're requesting, and I believe there was no issues last year when they did it, so. With that, there was a motion before you.
I move to accept the request for the usage of non-street legal vehicles and possible delay of traffic on the city streets for the class of 2022, last ride to school as presented.
Second, I heard a lot of, a lot of voices for second.
Motion, yeah, by Counselor Sledoff, seconded. And do we have any discussion?
Thank you.
I would just like to finish hearing Catherine talk. I don't think we need to have her start over, but I would like to hear the rest of what she had prepared to talk to us about.
Yeah, go ahead, Catherine.
All right, I was just going to say how we already have volunteers lined out to help stop traffic on the side streets such as Rose Street, Crestview, Elder Street, Maple, not Maple, sorry, Laurel and Willow Street. So we have volunteers that are already lined out to help stop traffic, but safe for all of the students and for anybody else potentially there.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Is it, was last year your first year?
Um, no, we've done this for quite a few years. I remember being a freshman, we all went out to the sidewalk and watched. I think that would have been class of 2019 or 2018 do it. And I'm not sure how many years prior have done that, but I know that, I think they did it last year as well.
Kaylee, I know you're the school counselor. Go ahead and comment in. I know, I'm sure you're waiting to say something.
Oh, Mayor, can I finish really quick?
Yeah. I think, I think Kaylee was gonna answer your question. She's the high school counselor.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my name is Kaylee Sokolowski, 48122 East First Street, and I am senior advisor this year, and I teach a lot of other things at the high school and Catherine University. We did this, I think the first time was the year pre-shutdown, so it was three years ago, and it was a huge success. Yeah, was that your freshman year, Catherine, or was it?
Yeah, I think it was 2019 or 2018.
Okay.
I don't remember which one.
And that year, they started at the post office. I think this year, we're gonna- Um, and that year, they started at the post office. I think this year, we're gonna just keep it within the couple blocks around the elementary school and the high school. Um, because it was, we didn't get all the vol- like, we, we got as many volunteers as you could and all the way down the post office was a lot of volunteers. So Catherine's been working hard to get all the intersections covered, just so we can kind of tell folks what's going on and divert any traffic. Um, yeah, and it was, and last time we did it, it was a huge success. The kids at the elementary school and the high school loved it, so it was, it was, it's a lot of fun. It's a good way to celebrate their last.
Absolutely, so um, I was gonna ask, is this something that's considered a spectator event? Can, can people come out and cheer them on and? And watch them go down?
We would encourage that. We're, I think we're working with the elementary school to see if the teachers would like to bring their students out to kind of send us off and. Show what they can potentially do as their seniors and then do it with the high schoolers as well.
That's a really.
Then parents and everybody can come out and wa-watch too.
Absolutely. Make sure you get it posted on Facebook on the chat forum.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, uh, Catherine. And Kaylee.
What was the date of that?
Uh, June eighth, and we wanted to start around eight twenty AM, just so we can wait till all of the buses get back at the bus barn, so we're not interfering with any. Late buses or anything.
Awesome. Counselors, do any, you guys have any more questions for um, Catherine or Ms. Sokolowski?
No, I think it's a great thing that uh, you're doing this. It's uh, back when I went to school. We had trouble with the horses in the buggies. So it's, it's great to get to do this and it's very much appreciative uh. For me as a member of Oak Ridge, I, I really think it's something and it gives pride to the school. So thank you very much for doing this.
Thank you. Any other counselor, Bjarnson, go ahead.
Yeah, I think this is really cool and I'm excited to watch it and a little bit sad at the same time, but I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, so there's an iPhone user with a hand raised. Is that Counselor Whitney?
No, it's Gina Fern and I want.
I'm sorry.
Everybody. Well, I just want to tell the teachers I have a graduating senior and I want to tell them thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor Hooker.
Yeah, I just, I'm curious. I know this is like late notice, but I'm curious, uh, maybe. Next year, maybe they could do it a little further. Instead of right around the school, maybe they could do, you know, down commercial or go a little bit further, so.
We were wanting to do it from the post office down to the high school, so on the main street east first, except. Um, we had to get volunteers for each side street to kind of stop traffic to make it safe. But we couldn't get the number of volunteers for it, so we shortened it so we could still go around both of the schools. And show both of the schools what they can do. And so that's the only reason why. Didn't have the volunteers for it this year, but next year, we're hoping to get. More volunteers and parents or even community members to help with it, so then more people can see it.
That's what I was wondering if maybe, maybe you could put it out there next year to the community.
What if you put it out there this year, maybe put a social media post out there and if you could get some volunteers. I personally would be willing to make my vote a, a longer route contingent on if you guys got more volunteers. I don't know about the rest of the council, but you know, I, I think there's a lot of people in the community that would love to help you guys.
Absolutely, and I can tell you right now that if it's okay to even say, I'm sure it is, Ken and I would be happy to volunteer.
What do you think about that, Chief Martin?
Actually, I was thinking that we could probably solve those issues and not even need as many volunteers. We could put a police car in the front and a fire truck or ambulance in the back and just do a slow roll and.
Yep.
We kind of do that with shop with the cop and we pick up the kids at school. We, we do that. We do kind of a slow roll with the. Emergency lights on till we get out of town, so we could do something very similar to that.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Counselor Hooker. What do you think about that, Catherine?
That would be really fun and if we, um, we could still have the volunteers that we have lined out even with the. Uh, would consider a police escort, pretty much.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I think that would be an amazing idea. Would we just do our original plan and start at the post office?
How about you guys connect with the police chief and he chooses a starting point and you guys can decide that offline maybe and then make your announcement. Um, you know, on the school's page or something like that.
Okay.
Um, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, I just wanted to say I'm also happy to volunteer. If you need any volunteers for that event, uh, please reach out to me. My contact info is on the city website.
Thank you, Counselor Kenyon. Counselor Spleedoff?
I'd like to make a friendly amendment to this motion. That uh, they can, that they start at the post office in. Continue down there with the police and fire truck escort.
Um, I don't think the mo- the motion actually had a start and end position. So, yeah, I don't think you need to do that, but that was a good thought.
No problem.
I think we're okay with the, the motion that's already on the table.
Thank you.
Chief, did you have anything else?
No, that's just my original hand, sorry.
Okay, so um, thank you for bringing that up, Counselor Hooker. It's nice to give them a better opportunity. Um, Jackie, can you call for the vote?
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Did you call me?
Yes.
No, she said she did call you.
I think so.
Uh, we, I believe you were third.
Okay.
We got all eyes on that, so.
Okay, motion passed. Thanks for bringing that to us, Catherine.
Thank you, and I'd like to thank all of you for your time.
So just go ahead and connect with Chief Martin after the meeting and um, you guys set up the start and end spot.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next thing up on the agenda is.
Is uh. Yeah, request for council action for a motion for event permits, uh, Kagan Cast Festival request, the Kagan Cast Festival. Event permit, road closure and temporary OLCC permit. The Kagan Cast Festival has completed an event permit, is requesting a road closure of city streets. They're also requesting a city approval of a temporary OLC permit license for the event. Uh, staff recommends acceptance by a motion of the council. Uh, and the motion is before you. And one thing I wanted to clarify is it, looking in the past, uh, council has done it in two motions or also done it in one. And for the low, road closure and for the alcohol permit, so I didn't know how you guys, how you wanted to do it, so I, I put it just with one uh, motion. And it's been done both ways in the past.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move to accept the Kagan Cast Festival event permit to include approval of road closure. And approval of oil CC temporary sales license as presented.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Spleedoff and seconded by Counselor Coker. Any discussion? Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I had a couple of questions first for um, Kevin Martin. Uh, do you know on the OLCC permit or actually? I guess it's, it looks to me like they're applying to us for a permit and to OLCC for a permit. Is that accurate? For the liquor?
The, the city has to approve, have say in it, I believe. That's, it's not, it's, it's an OLCC permit, temporary permit, and the city has to have say in, say in it. So even like a permanent permit, we've brought those to you before as a council. A new, a new business or there's a few other things I don't have off the top of my head, but yes, the, the city council has a say in that.
Okay, I just wondered if it's something that the city charges for in addition to what they're probably paying OLCC.
I do not believe so, but I can research that. I don't. Yeah, the city, assistant city recorder says she doesn't believe so either.
Okay.
I don't remember that past over.
Yeah, I was just curious and I didn't remember it either. Um, my only other comment on this is I noticed, and I don't, I don't see it in front of me because it, you know, you have to scroll up and down. There's a lot of pages here. But I did notice on one part of the application, it says they're requesting to be open from a specific time up until ten PM. And then on the OLCC permit, I remember it said until eleven PM. And I believe our ordinance is ten, so um, I wanted to find out what the plan really is and.
Amy, I see that you're online. Feel free to answer the questions. Thank you for joining us.
Amy, you're muted if you're talking.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Sorry about that. Thank you for having me. Um, the street closure is from ten AM to twelve midnight. And the serving is from three PM until eleven PM. I'm trying to, where it's, I'm looking through my paperwork now.
I know it's got change somewhere.
Counselor Kenyon, maybe you'll.
In the past, it's been um, eleven end time of the actual festival has always been eleven PM.
So then are we asking for a variance on our um. On our noise thing?
What? So, so Counselor Kenyon, in the uh, the rental agreement and use of alcohol in city facilities. Uh, there's a third section that says the event must conclude by ten PM to be compliant with city ordinance or at the time. Approved by city council on the application, so I believe that would be uh, your, your prerogative as a council to set that time.
Oh, I see. So as long as we pr- approve it the way that it's written at eleven, then they would be able to do that. Uh, my, my only last question would be is I didn't see the list of, and forgive me if I missed it, there was a lot of documents there, but. Did you provide us with the list of people within five hundred feet as requested on the application? And did you contact, or you probably haven't contacted them yet because it's not close enough to the event.
No, I have not gotten the list yet. We wait until closer to the event, but we do mail it out. They have to done twenty-one days. Um, prior to the event, twenty, we, so between seven twenty-three, July twenty-third and July thirtieth, we must no. Uh, contact all the residents within that, within that list, so it's a little bit. Too early to get the list. I know from years.
I'm having the recorder uh, scroll to the map, so.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. It, uh, it, it just dawned on me that we are way too early to notify people, so. Um, I appreciate that you're doing that.
I will say from the, the Pro temp city administrator standpoint, it was nice that this permit was brought into us. Much, fairly early for the, for the event, so they have a lot of ti- lead time out there to do their planning.
Right. All right, that's all I had.
Now, of course, do you have any questions for Amy?
No, thank you.
I have one. Um, so I know mostly because of COVID, the Kagan Cast has really had to adapt drastically. Um, to make changes to the event. I'm curious if your event is going to be, you know, much like it was pre-COVID. Um, you know, on East First Street, is it going to be like from the pub? Um, just in that general same area. I am looking at your map so that it does appear that that is where it's going to be. I'm just curious. If you're basically going back to the old setup.
Trying to go back to normal, whatever normal is like right now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Counselors, does anyone else have any more questions? All right, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Mayor Hollitt?
Aye.
Counselor Bjarnson?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Seven, seven zero there, so.
Motion carried. Thank you, guys. Thank you for coming, Amy. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now on to discussion of future city volunteer appreciation event. I believe that was Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, I, I'm just looking for discussion and ideas, um, because I would really like this to be something that we do.
I have one idea that came up um, after council meeting that was a different one than when we discussed last time. Um, at one of my prior large emp- um, employment places, we actually purchased tickets from the M's game and we did a big barbecue there and the M's. Um, they actually have a whole entire section that is just for um, large groups, you know, for people to do employee appreciation. Events like that where you can basically pay a small fee and they bring your barbecued food and you get to enjoy the game. And I know, you know, the Ducks and a whole bunch of other um, places do the same thing, so I thought that might be one idea to throw out there.
That's a great idea to research and check into. Um, yeah, I, I, I'm just looking for ideas and I don't think we have to do it. You know, it doesn't have to be done right now, or it could be done, you know, this summer, but I think it's important to honor. And show appreciation for all of our volunteers and. And I'm just looking for ideas and discussion from all of us. You know, it's not anything I've ever done before. I don't usually. Doing big events is not my thing, so. But, yeah, just looking for feedback.
Counselor Hooker?
Yeah, I, I think your idea is a very good one and Bobby, I think, Counselor Whitney, I think you. I think you have a really good idea on an event for volunteers. But I do think that it needs to be their own event, not attached with another event that's going on. I think that type of thing would make possibly more people think of volunteering to know that the city or the council and everybody appreciates what they do, even though we may not say it enough, but, you know, I think their own event would, would have a big impact.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that statement. Oh, yeah, I'm just definitely looking for ideas and I think it's, um, I think it should be, you know, something that, comes from us as a council to, to the volunteers in our community, you know, yeah, I just think it would have a, it would make a large statement and hopefully have a nice positive impact, which is really what I'm looking for as well, is something that has a positive impact, um, and that we can build off of and and lay some groundwork hopefully for some more volunteerism and, you know, really just building up our program as well. It's appreciating everybody that contributes. So does anybody else have any other ideas of, um, what they think?
Counselor Kenyon's got her hand up. Thank you, Counselor Hooker.
Yeah, I actually wanted to ask a couple of questions. Do we have any? First, I guess, uh, specify, you're asking for, and I love the idea of volunteer appreciation, but are you asking to appreciate just the volunteers that volunteer for the city of Oak Ridge? You know, because in other words, like the Chamber of Commerce is all volunteers and there's the UW CDC, which is volunteer. There's a lot of committees that are not related to the council. And I wanted to get an idea there.
So you know, I had thought about that and, um, because there's, there are a lot of, volunteer committees and organizations that aren't specifically attached to city council, but that do things for the city and with the city and collaborate with the city.
Right.
And so I think that is definitely something that's up for discussion on if we want to look that broad, because I think this is, it's not just my thing. I feel like this is something that could be ours. And, um, I think that's just worth discussing and dissecting and really, um, deciding how we want to approach that as, as a team.
Mm-hmm. Um, well, the re, the biggest reason why I was asking is because I was thinking, you know, like I could do a great big, uh, Dutch oven of chili or something like that, but I, you know, if we're talking hundreds, that might not.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, um, you know, maybe this is something that, uh, you could form a little subcommittee and, you know, talk, talk all this stuff out through a subcommittee and then present the idea to council. What do you think?
Yeah, I could do that.
Because a, um, subcommittee of three counselors is, you know, it works under all the laws.
Yeah.
I'm willing to help with that, Bobby, if, if you coordinate the committee.
Okay, okay, I could do that.
And I see Chief Martin raising his hand and I just have a feeling I know what he's gonna say, but I was thinking it might be smart to add a couple, um, um, city staff on that committee because they get a chance to, um, see a lot of the committees working. I mean, a lot of the volunteers, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff?
Yes, yeah, on that order, we have other people that volunteer that are not on committees. Uh, I just, uh, learned the other day during that house fire we had up here, we had people that jumped in and, and helped. One of the guys was from the, um, Dylan's down there. Uh, and he come down and helped on the, oh, so would it include someone like that or, or what?
You know, I, I hear what you're saying. I think it would, so for example, I could see it including, um, regular volunteers at the library. They aren't necessarily on the library board, but they volunteer regularly at the library and help. Um, I could see people in that situation being included. But I don't know if it would just be someone that just, you know, just like a one time only stepped in and helped in a crunch for a fire. Um, but that's something the committee can talk about and, and look at and, you know, really kind of, um, fill it out and see what's appropriate or what, what recommendation we would like to make.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Chief Martin.
Uh, I really like what the, the discussion we've had here and I really like what, uh, Counselor Hooker said about having something for, for the volunteers. It's, it's theirs, not shared with something else. Uh, but I think, uh, having a subcommittee would be really cool to get some input and to keep it pushing forward so it doesn't get put on the back burner because, my only thought was, as it's already been brought up, do we include all volunteers in the community? We can include city ones. Can we start off and do it multiple ways? Because I thought a third part to this that would be really neat, going into the future is have the, uh, appreciation thing, however that's done for the volunteers, but also in the future, maybe turn it into a recruiting event for new volunteers because we have a core group of volunteers that volunteer both for the city and sometimes the school and at the food box and a whole bunch of other things where there's, there's a few people in the community that do a lot and I'd like to see them recognized, but I'd also like to see that, uh, other citizens can see what, what volunteerism means because in, my opinion is part of that is dying in America, the volunteerism, but, uh, we have a tight knit community and we're small. We love each other. Sometimes we hate each other at times, but have it, having that, having the appreciation to the volunteers and then people seeing that people are helping their fellow citizens out and their neighbors is really cool. And so my two cents is I'd really like to see a subcommittee of a couple of counselors and I'm going to push this out to staff during staff meetings and just a bunch of stuff we can think about. Thank you.
So what do you think about adding a staff member to this subcommittee?
I think that's a, that's a good idea and that's, I said that just a few minutes ago because I had a feeling Kevin was gonna say it.
Yeah, that's, that's why I mentioned it again. Um, I was asking Kevin what he's, we thought, because I agree. I think that's a great idea as well. Yeah. So do you, do you think you'll ask some staff if they want to participate? Then is that what you're thinking, Kevin?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, Counselor Kenyon?
Um, I would like to make a motion to create a subcommittee for a volunteer appreciation event that would include up to three counselors and up to, I would say two, two staff. Um, to be created and implemented.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Counselor Kenyon and seconded by Counselor Spleedoff. Any more discussion?
Um.
Go ahead.
Do you think there would be any, um, community members that would be interested in participating? Kind of wondering what your thoughts are.
Um, can I answer?
Yes, definitely.
My personal opinion is, uh, since, since it's us that's recognizing them, I feel like it should be us, as in the council and the staff that, you know, that makes the decisions on the, on the process and everything. And probably the biggest reason why I'm saying that because I love citizen participation, but uh, it actually takes a lot of work to put out notices and get people to sign up and then go through the council process to get selected.
Yeah.
I think it's just probably easier to move forward just as I presented it in the motion.
Okay, no, I'm fine with that. I was just throwing it out there. It's a question.
Oh, and I also wanted to throw out there that I'm, uh, I'm going to throw my name in the ring for, uh, counselor on the, on the subcommittee. We should probably choose that committee before the end of this day or who knows when it'll happen.
Is there anyone else that's interested being a part of the subcommittee?
I would love to be.
Okay, um, I'll go ahead and step out though, and then I'll let you three, um, be on that subcommittee. And if I have any ideas, I'll just forward them to you guys.
Cool.
Okay, so subcommittee will be led by Counselor Whitney and, um, also Counselor Hooker and Counselor Kenyon will be on it and then Chief Martin will go ahead and get, um, at least two staff members according to the motion. And we just need to take a vote if you guys are okay with that. Any more discussion?
And Dawn, can I, can I read back what I have wrote down from the motion?
Absolutely.
Making a motion to form a council subcommittee to include three counselors and two staff members.
And then I said, um, for a, a subcommittee for a volunteer appreciation event.
Okay.
Okay, Jackie, will you call for the vote?
Counselor Spleedoff?
Aye.
Counselor Coker?
Aye.
Counselor Whitney?
Aye.
Mayor Hullett?
Aye.
Counselor Kenyon?
Aye.
Counselor B. Aronson?
Aye.
Counselor Hooker?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you guys. Okay, next thing on the bit, um, agenda is Counselor Kenyon, you wanted to talk about the public safety fee. That'll be 10.3?
Thank you, um.
9.3.
Oh, I'm sorry, 9.3. Yeah, those things I should have put them under city council business and not, I'm sorry, go ahead, 9.3.
All right, and the, um, thing that I'd like to talk about for public safety fee, um, is I noticed in the current budget that we're in, we have a line for receiving the revenue that's being collected for the public safety fee, but we don't have a line created to transfer any of those, um, any of that revenue into the emergency services fund, which the ordinance, you know, spells out that it's for police and firing ambulance. So I wanted the council to discuss getting a transfer made this year in a supplemental budget to transfer part of that revenue. And I did already have a, uh, email question and answer between myself and, um, our finance director, Colleen Shirley. And she said it wasn't scheduled to be done this year, but I think it's important that it is. So I just wanted to talk to the council about it and get your opinions.
Can I say something?
Yeah, I mean, uh, mayor, sorry.
Um, actually, Chief Martin has his hand raised. I'm not sure who that was that said, can I say something?
It was me, Colleen.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Colleen.
So, um, Dawn, I think maybe you misunderstood me. So I said that that's part of my year end, um, stuff that I have to do still is do all the transfers because there's quite a few transfers that need done, like with the water loans and stuff like that. So that will be part of that. And also, um, Kevin's probably going to bring this up, but, um, we're not able to do a supplemental budget this year.
Oh, I would like to hear about that. Okay, um, so I had three things, but do we just finish up this topic?
Yeah, let's finish this topic. Counsel, uh, Chief Martin's got his hand up too. Did you have anything else, Colleen?
Not right now.
Okay, go ahead, Chief Martin.
And, and so, uh, Dawn to, or Counselor Kenyon to clarify, uh, in speaking with, uh, Kenya Wolf from Alcox, she said we do not have time to do a supplemental budget this year. So, uh, she is going to help Colleen with just doing those, all those transfers. It could possibly be a ding on our audit, but it's just an accounting thing. There's, there's, there's no other real issues with it besides a, an audit issue is what she, uh, relayed to Colleen and I when we were working on the budget and asking her about supplemental budgets. And, uh, I believe I have a line in, uh, the emergency services funds for next year, if that is still the council's wishes. So next year, there's a line and it was just, our projected amount was split between general fund and emergency service fund. And that, I believe that the projected amount was 240,000 and it was in one of the lines in the EMS revenue.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
So, um, I did see that in the projected budget for next year. And so, but I mean, but it looks to me like it's based on what we project to receive next year and transfer part of it to ESF, which I love that idea and it's actually what prompted me to look and see if our budget was set up that way for right now. And seeing that it's not, I would just recommend then, and I can recommend this in budget committee, but, um, I think we should add it to the budget and maybe another line that says make up for 20, 21, 22, or whatever we're in now. Uh, just to account for the part that was collected this year and not transferred. Does that make sense? Anyway, we can talk about that in budget committee, I guess.
Okay. Um, one, are we done with that discussion, Dawn, or did you have anything else?
Um.
I know you have other topics, but that particular.
Yeah, on that topic, I think we can follow it up in budget committee now that I have information.
Okay, so I skipped accidentally 9.2, so I want to jump back to that. The fee waiver and, um, I actually brought this up to Colleen a couple of days ago, so thank you guys for getting it on the agenda.
And then mayor, if I could, could, uh, end the discussion on the other one, uh, the 10.3 or 9.3 since we skipped, but, uh, Counselor Kenyon, yeah. So when, it'll help us too at year end, so probably in July, towards the end of July, the first of August, when all the, everything's reconciled, that, uh, we'll know the actual amount that was recovered. So, and, and then Colleen can do her transfers correctly and know what all the amounts are, so, uh, and again, so with that, and then, uh, 9.2, mayor, if I could just start that real quick.
Please.
The, the, the mayor brought the stuff to Colleen and I, the discussion of adding fee waivers and it was to a certain form, but I, I just thought about, so I added the part to certain city forms that have that because that question does come up quite a bit, uh, with citizens on some of the like rental fees and stuff like that. When they are nonprofits and this and that, and, uh, our forms don't have a kind of an explanation of a waiver for that and the mayor asks for this to be on this council discussion.
Yeah, so I, I, I will say a couple of things about it. When you fill out the building use permit, Yeah, so I, I, I will say a couple of things about it. When you fill out the building use permit and you check either like the community building at Green Waters, um, the amphitheater, any of those places, you fill out the form and put your information. And if you want to do a fee waiver, um, there's really no explanation to anyone how to go about getting a fee waiver or even a checkbox if a person would like to apply for that. So um, I brought this up in our TMP meeting today too. And I just thought that it would be a good idea if we maybe put another additional page onto the form. Or like, you know, it had a checkbox and said, are you looking for a fee waiver? And I think it's would be even, the next step would be good for us to ask if, you know, the person that's asking for a fee waiver, you know, if they're a profit or a nonprofit use, that kind of thing. So um, yeah. Any discussion? Go ahead, chief.
And then maybe if we could add one more box that I just thought about is uh, there's been times when government entities have used different buildings. So maybe if we could have a, a checkbox for that. I mean, I was just thinking of times with fire and forest service and whatnot, if we're filling out a form for them, that different government entities could have a checkbox for a fee waiver.
Yeah. Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
Um, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, but this sounds like a perfect discussion for a committee. And I believe it's the, I believe it's the community services committee that works on forms or the admin. No, I don't think it would be admin. I'm not sure, anyway.
Parks and Rec?
No.
No.
Years ago, I was on the community services committee and we actually updated a form. It was, it was actually the parks, this, this application for applying for rental that we updated. But I'm not on that committee anymore. Does anyone know if that's active?
No.
Uh, I think they combined it with parks, to parks and community services.
Oh, you're right.
Think it changed. Um, and I know the last, I, I feel like this is more of an admin committee thing, if that's what we wanna look at, or maybe, you know, since it's.
Well, the reason, I would be happy to take it on in admin, except that currently we are short one member for a quorum, so we are not able to meet until we find a new member. And our charter subcommittee's been fairly active and I just, I haven't been able to make the time to try and round somebody up.
You know, I just have to say, I normally am all for committees and passing and delegating things off to committees, but I feel like in this instance, I know that's gonna take months and months to get this sent to a committee and then back for review, and that just takes a long time. And I feel like something like this, we, we just need a checkbox on the form so that an applicant, when they come and fill it out, so that they know that, hey, check the box if you're looking for a fee waiver. And then if that is, then you go forward from there. I feel like it's really just something simple. And if it would help, I'm happy to talk to a couple of other cities and see um, what they have on their form and bring it back. And we could just simply add something simple to our current form we already have.
Normally, I would agree to that, but another thing I was gonna point out is that I actually feel like the council or us, or a committee to recommend to council needs to discuss fee waivers. We've been talking about that for two years that I know of and probably longer. Do we do them? Do we not do them? Who do we do them for, you know, et cetera? I really feel like it's a topic that might need more conversation than just putting a box on a form. Because we kinda need a policy to go along with it, is how I feel.
Yeah. Um, go ahead, Chief Martin.
Uh, well, I was gonna suggest something, but Counselor Kenyon's did kinda change my mind, so I'll just lower my hands.
Counselor Hooker?
Yeah, I just wanna make, kinda find out for sure. This is, this is a discussion only of whether we put a box on a form or we don't put that box on the form, correct?
Yes, correct. I think the issue about what our decision process is on if we accept the fee waiver or not. I personally think that's a different issue. And I do agree with Counselor Kenyon that that should be a policy that should go to admin. But in my opinion, right now, we're simply talking about adding a checkbox to the form so that citizens know that. Cause right now, when you look at the form, there's nothing on it about that. And it, it just leaves it um, kind of up in the air.
Right. So if that's all it is, maybe we need to have this decided, kinda decided tonight whether to do that or not. And then maybe schedule a work session. I know work sessions are sometimes, you know, crazy, but and our schedule is really crazy with the budget, but I honestly think working a work session would be a good idea because we will need to decide, you know, what the rules are gonna be.
Yeah.
We have no rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, so Jan brought up work session and that was the note I just wrote down for myself right before she brought it up. Um, I think it's a good idea to have a work session to discuss this and, you know, maybe after we get through the budget season to have that. Um, but you know, I have more questions about just adding a checkbox. And I, and I feel like it can be a little more complex than what we're thinking because um, I would hate to see us add a checkbox so that people know, but I would hate to see people automatically checking a checkbox, thinking they're going to um, have their fee waived or that that's always an option. I don't want it to be something that can become a standard, that you just check a box to have your fee waived. And so I'd really like to have the opportunity to talk about it in a little more detail and really um, get that information back from other cities as to what they do. Um, so I, I feel like a work session would be our best bet um, to discuss policy and then also really decide how we would like to approach it on our forms. If we do want a checkbox, if we want a checkbox with wording that says something like this does not guarantee that your fee will be waived, that it's only just you applying to request to have your fee waived. I don't know. Um, but I think we might wanna talk about it a little more before making a decision.
Thank you. Counselor Spleedoff?
Yeah, on, on your, when they put in for this, they, they ask automatically if they can have a fee waived.
No, they don't, they don't ask automatically.
Oh, well, it's, I've been on a bunch of, of these to, to ask for a fee waiver.
They handwrite it in.
Yeah, handwrite in. And the thing is, is I, I agree, we should have a work session on this because this has been floating around for as long as I've been on council and we have had no definitive answer. And so maybe we could get a work session as soon as possible and get this answered. And so we can get out of this little circle we're going in and get everything positive for everybody knows where everybody stands. So uh, I know we're in budget season and we've got council meetings and everything else, but I think we should get this done as soon as possible.
Thank you. Go ahead, Chief Martin.
Uh, I guess I just maybe have a compromise that we could, that the council could consider. And uh, the start of the compromise could probably just be a consensus to have Colleen and the mayor and I, or Colleen, a different city counselor and I talked about. And uh, the compromise would be for the time being, if we could add a checkbox to the rental requests that has fee waiver to be submitted to city council for approval. And then that would give us a time gap to where we could, we'd still have something, but then we'd be able to do the research and have a work session. And council could do a policy, cause I really think it needs, it's, needs a policy. Cause it, just to think in the future, there could be certain ones that the council could consider a policy that uh, the permanent city administrator could approve some and some the council would have to approve. And there's a lot to talk about there, but to do something in the meantime, just to add a box for a fee waiver that's approved by city council. That, that has to go to city council for approval.
Go ahead, Counselor Kenyon.
I actually love this conversation, just to say, because each person who's spoken since the last time I spoke, I thought, ooh, I like that, that I agree with that. And then the next person says something different, oh yeah, I like that, I wanna agree with that. And now it gets up to Kevin Martin and I like what you just said. Um, I would be willing to accept a compromise and throw a box on there for now and then uh, schedule a work session for July. I really think we're too busy to put one in on our books before, I would even say the end of July at the soonest, um, to start working on a policy, a work session for the whole council.
I second that myself. I really, I think that would be smart. Go ahead, Counselor Whitney.
Yeah, I could agree um, to that, cause I think the compromise is a great idea. However, I think with a checkbox, um, it needs to be clear that just because they've checked it, doesn't mean they'll have their fee waived. So I think that, that information needs to be really clear on the form.
I would agree.
Yeah, but I, I think that's a great idea going forward and um, it's a good compromise and I'm glad he, he brought that forward.
I agree.
It could say that go to council for consideration. Would that, would that make it clear enough?
Yeah. And honestly, we have that language already on the RTMP form. We could glean it from there and make it consistent.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Counselor Spleedoff?
Totally agree. Uh, for a temporary situation, we need to, you know, that would be great to get going with Kevin's brought up. And we'll kind of everybody around, uh, and then toward uh, the end of July to get a work session going and discuss this and, and put it to rest. So I, I agree totally. I think we should take a consensus right now or, or would we vote?
I think consensus would be fine. If everyone is okay that um, I'm fine to meet with Colleen, uh, since I did bring it up, but I'm also open if another counselor would like to meet and um, work on the form with Colleen and just simply add a checkbox and um, what Counselor Whitney stated. And then we set up a work session, summertime work session, um, to really dig into it and um, get a policy on the actual fee waiver itself and what our guidelines are on accepting or denying fee waivers. I'm quite sure there's other cities that have lots of them already done. Do we have a consensus on that? Or is there another counselor that would like to do it?
I agree with.
I agree.
Okay.
Uh, I'm in consensus.
Counselor.
In consensus as well.
Thank you.
I agree as well. Thank you.
Okay, if there's no one else jumping up, I'll meet with Colleen and we'll get it done. Okay, thank you guys. Um, on to what would be nine point five or nine point four, I'm sorry, nine point four. Um, request to volunteer to help on the website, Counselor Kenyon.
Okay, so this actually came up in my RTMP committee earlier today with Counselor Whitney and the mayor Hollitt. Um, what we noticed in the committee was that there's multiple forms that people are filling out when they're applying for RTMPs so far this year. Um, I'm assuming some are being handed out at city hall, but some of them, we saw two applications tonight that were different and they were both created, pulled off of the website. And I know there's even another one on the website that really shouldn't be there. So in an effort to not burden our pro team CA and our future brand new CA when we get one, I would like to volunteer to come in and make some adjustments to the website. If the council would agree to that, or if there's another counselor who would like to do that. Um, I really think that our council should be stepping up more and more with little things that we can do to help to alleviate the burden of all the responsibilities that are on this, on the plate for this pro team CA.
I would agree to that.
I would also agree. I think that they're, they're, all their plates are very full. So, and I know Counselor Kenyon has actually worked on the website um, previous years, so.
Years ago, yeah.
Yeah. Any other thoughts, chief? Do you have any thoughts? I know we also have an intern that's been helping work on the website, but I believe her time is almost up.
So that was, that was my thought to maybe see if like Grace can help us some. I guess the, the thing that uh, maybe council could help me on is that was the thing I noticed, there's multiple RTMP applications. And I know we've been down that road multiple times, especially if somebody could help look through the minutes to figure out which is the correct one. Cause that, that was, that was my question is, there, there is multiple, multiple RTMP applications and cause I had to, I had to look and I, I found the same thing that Counselor Kenyon had. I think there's two or three even on the website.
Yeah.
Because I received different ones, so.
Well, I can tell you the one that I submitted was the most recent. The other one was not, that was, that was definitely an old one. Colleen?
Um, are these forms, are like, is there something like at the bottom that has a revision date on them so that we can be tracking the revised dates on them?
Some of them have that and some don't. I definitely agree. That's a standard that we really should always be doing. So helpful.
You're right.
And then I also wanted to let you know that we actually do have our uh, grace until the end of July.
Okay. And is, what is Grace's plate? Like, I know she has, you know, she's working on the housing project and doesn't she have kind of a full plate too? Or do you think she has more time to dedicate to the website?
I don't know. I think that's something that me and chief can uh, follow up and then um, go from there.
Okay.
Yeah. But definitely would like um, some input either way on the forms, the ones that are outdated, the ones that aren't. And then make sure that we are following the procedure of putting the dates on those, so.
Yeah. I just have to say this, since we're talking about website stuff, I really, and I know it's probably a funding thing, but I really would love to see us look at a completely new website software. I know that ours is pretty antiquated. There's a lot of things that we cannot do with our current website platform. And I have spoke to Grace a little bit about that, so um, I, I totally agree. You know, the RTMP stuff needs to be updated right away so that we make sure our people are having the right form. But I think more into the future, we really need to consider a completely new website platform and maybe look at what other cities are using and what works better from them. Cause I find our um, website very um, I don't think it's very intuitive and um, I just know there's a lot of things that we can't do. So, my thoughts.
Uh, over our IT guy would be a good uh, connection for that too as well. I'm just thinking.
Yeah.
For some ideas. Um, I'd like to also say that it's important, even though the form definitely needs to be updated ASAP. But just that section on, there is, if you, if you do a search on the website for RTMP, cause that's really the only way to find anything anymore. Um, what comes up does not have our current description of our current policy on how to apply or what to expect when you apply, which we did include in um, February, when it was approved by council. At the first, I think it was February third. You know, so that, that really needs to be on there so that when people are You know, so that that really needs to be on there so that when people are thinking about applying, they can go and look and see what our program is and pull up a form to fill out right then and there and and, you know, make their even submitting it online would be ideal. I know Amy Kelly's good at that. Doing those forms, but anyway.
That's one of those things with a new website. Had we, if we had a better platform, we online form submissions would be so much easier to do right now with our current website. It's very difficult to set those up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. But yeah, I fully agree.
I think it's a great idea if they think that Grace might have some time for them to ask, but I just want to put it out there that I'm willing. If she's not available and, you know, I could spare maybe a couple of hours a week to put into it and it's it's something that I feel is urgent for RTMP. That's, I guess that's the last I'm gonna say about it because it's this is the time of year people are applying and it's pretty important. They know the program and have to write application. So.
Thank you, Dawn. Did you have anything else on that? Or go ahead, Chief Martin.
Just so I can write this down councillor Kenyon, the the newest RTMP policy that was February 3rd, 2022.
Uh huh.
So I can go research that.
That's when the council approved it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And then shall I bounce into my last topic?
Councillor Spleedoff, did you have a question on that?
Yes, I want to thank councillor Kenyon for volunteering and I know she's got a pretty full plate, but thank you and it would be appreciated.
Okay, nine point five audit.
Okay, so my only question there was whether or not there's an update on the status of the audit process for Colleen or Kevin Martin.
I'll defer this one to Colleen. I believe she knows more about it than I do.
Yeah, so we're still working on just you final things that we're following up with and hoping to have that done here very shortly, so.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I wanted to make just a quick note for council to think since we're on this line, just a quick note, it was gonna be an update thought, but since we're talking about it, that Elkhog gave us some ideas too for future audits that could probably really help out and even might lower some financial costs with audits. And so probably won't be me, but Colleen and the future city administrator probably hopefully would bring back to council for some ideas we got from Elkhog and some cost saving stuff with Elkhog. It's just the short suite of it is Elkhog has a has a really good auditor and because we subscribe to Elkhog services, that's something we can piggyback on. So it just will be something for and could be some cost saving and something for council to think about in the future.
I'd love to hear about it.
I would too. Okay, I think that ends business from city council and we already did so 10.3 pro temp updates.
Just gave you those real fast as a matter of time. It was some of the stuff that the council had talked about in last meeting that so caretaker contracts, I believe it's most appropriate probably for the new city administrator to bring those back to the council. So that'll be on a pass along list for that. ODOT rest area money, Colleen and I are looking into that and hopefully we'll have something here in the next couple of weeks to get information back on that. Want to give a reminder to everybody, it's wildfire safety night tomorrow night at Green Forest Park and it starts at 5:00 PM and there's panel discussion starting at 6:00 PM. And then then I would, then the only other thing for me is in the 13.1 in the resolutions.
Okay, do we have any reported committees? Okay, go ahead with 13.1.
13.1, it's a resolution and a motion before the council and as soon as I get to it here. So asking for a council to approve a resolution of an amendment to the Lane County Deadly Physical Force Plan. The subject is resolution 2022-1 to approve the amended Lane County Desert Physical Force Plan. The Oregon State Legislature adopted Senate Bill 111 Oregon laws 2007 directing Lane County agencies to adopt a Lane County Deadly Physical Force Plan. The plan was originally adopted in 2008. What is before you is an amended Lane County Deadly Physical Force Plan. The amendment was adopted by the Lane County Board of Commissioners in March of 22. Senate Bill 111 Oregon laws 2007 requires submission of the plan and subsequent amendments for approval to the governing body of each law enforcement agency within the county. Staff recommends acceptance of the motion to council and the motions before you. Just a little other history. The chief, the chiefs and I, the sheriff and supervisors for some of the other agencies that are involved in this have already signed off on it to do our parts and the planning people from the county, I believe it's the district attorney, the sheriff, and it's another chief. They have signed off on it. Basically, this is to bring this for you as for information and to approve or disapprove. We highly suggest you approve it because it could put us in peril if you don't. It's again, it goes back to the Senate Bill 111 from 2008.
I'd like to make a motion. If they could raise the screen up a little bit. So I can. Okay. I move to continue. Let's see. I move to approve the resolution 2022-1 approving the amendment Lane County Deadly Force Physical Force Plan as presented.
I'll second that.
Motion made by councillor Spleedoff and seconded by councillor Kenyon. Any discussion? Kevin, does this affect your guys' job in any way?
It would if it was not passed.
Okay.
And would you like me to read the resolution into the record?
Yeah, councillor Kenyon, did you have a question though?
I wanted to find out if you could scroll just to, I know this is a lot of pages, but I remember reading there's one page that has just what's being amended for this year. I think it's really far down.
Do you remember what page it was on? It should be towards the end of.
I don't, but it's very close to the end, which is like 20 or 30 pages from now.
It's that's one, yeah, back up.
Right there.
No, it's, let's see.
I feel like this document is repeated several times in there.
There's the there is the document for us and there's also the document, the resolution and the document that the county commissioners approved. That's that's just, so it's the last page. So if you go back up to page 13, it's the one page after that. So back up the other way. Yeah.
Oh, I see. Very, very bottom. Okay.
So, want to keep going. Also, so one more page up. Should say 2022 amendment at the top. Let's, I'm here.
Page down from that one that you were on.
So it's like page 29, I think. One more page, there you go. Nope, yeah. Nope. Page 29. So one more page back. I know it's almost like it's not sticking on that page. Because I'm.
You have the.
Read that part real quick councillor Kenyon.
You're on page 32 right now. We're looking for 29.
Yeah.
That's 31, 30. 29, there we go.
Yep, right there.
Let me try to a minute. Yeah, did you ask me if I wanted you to read that?
Yeah, do you have a question on it councillor Kenyon?
Well, and this is why I wanted to see it again is so that I could read it because I thought I did. Um. I guess my main question would be is that I don't, I don't really know what all this means. What? What is this saying? That even.
About the specific uses of force. So to generalize, to generalize it, if anyone dies in our custody, whether it's from our use of force or they had some kind of the medical, let's say someone died in the back of a police car after an arrest or if we used lethal force on them or we used long lethal force and they still died. Basically, this whole thing is that the IT fit team, it's the Lane County multi-agency team investigates the the incident and then presents their findings to the district attorney.
Okay.
And it can be even, even if it's not a death, it's like bodily injury. Someone gets hurt really bad regardless of how it happens that the, I won't say regardless of how it happens. If it's involved in use of force or with our officers that that team comes and investigates.
Okay. That's basically what I thought it was saying, but I was surprised that that wouldn't already have been something that's been in place. So yeah, that's all I had. I'm good.
Okay. And I can, I can read it real fast just for the for the council and citizens.
Yeah.
If that's all clear.
Yes, please.
City of Oak Ridge.
Oh, wait, sorry. One more councillor Whitney, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understood this correctly because when I read through this, my understanding is that this is replacing a 2008 on policy, but it's basically changing or we're revisiting how we handle the situation after use of force has happened where somebody is seriously injured or passes away from a use of force or dies in custody. So so it's, so if I'm right, it's just basically about what happens after something, after an event happens or just updating their policy. Is and and if and if I read right, it's more to be reflective of a statewide policy, right? Or.
There's a lot, there's a lot of local history behind it. There was a review of a incident that happened with another agency and there was recommendations that came out of that. Each each county basically has to have this same thing and similar types of teams and investigations during these incidents. And there were some amendments after that review from I believe it was an attorney's office in California that investigated such things. And there were some amendments that were that were best practice and stuff like that that were changed.
Okay. Yeah, I'm I'm good with with this. I read through it. I think it's just keeping us in line with how things have changed. And how we need to do things going forward.
And to be to be frank, it's it's mostly to abide with the Senate Bill 111 that we we have to do this and and each governing body has to approve the plan per se. So the Oak Ridge City Council, I believe, approved it originally at the same time the other city councils did in 2008.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning the Senate bill because I knew it was a state effort. I just couldn't remember the exact language.
Okay, you want, ready to read that Kevin?
Yes, ma'am. The City of Oak Ridge Resolution Number 2022-1 Resolution approving the amended Lane County Deadly Physical Force Plan. Recitals are the use of deadly physical force by police officers within the city of Oak Ridge. Oregon is a matter of importance. The Oregon Legislature has adopted Senate Bill 111 Oregon laws 2007 directing the appointment of a Lane County Deadly Force Planning Authority and further directing the authority to adopt Lane County Deadly Force Plan. The duly designated and appointed Lane County Deadly Force Planning Authority has prepared such a plan in 2008 and subsequently prepared an amendment to the plan. The amendment was approved by the Lane County Board of Commissioners in March of 2022. Senate Bill 111 Oregon laws 2007 requires the submission of the plan and subsequent amendments for approval to the governing body of each law enforcement agency within Lane County. By the terms of Senate Bill 111, the Lane County Deadly Force Planning Authority has submitted to the Oak Ridge City Council to consider approval or disapproval of the plan as submitted with the 2022 amendment. Based on these findings, the City Council of Oak Ridge resolves as follows. A law enforcement jurisdiction within Lane County, the 2022 amendment to the Lane County Deadly Physical Force Plan is approved by the Oak Ridge City Council. The 2022 Lane County Deadly Physical Force Plan is attached hereto as Exhibit A and supersedes in total the prior 2008 version of the plan. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption. And then on the second page, there is the today's date. A place for the mayor to sign and a place for the city recorder to sign or assistance city recorder.
All right, are we ready to call for the vote? Go ahead Jackie.
Councillor Spleedoff.
Hi.
Mayor Hollitt.
Hi.
Councillor Cooper.
Hi.
Councillor Kenyon.
Hi.
Councillor Yarison. Councillor Hooker.
Hi.
Councillor Whitney.
Hi.
Seven oh.
Motion carried. Thank you for bringing that Kevin.
And then we'll have a copy for you to sign ma'am.
Okay. All right, looks like that concludes our meeting unless anybody has anything else. Last thing on the agenda would be public comment. So again, I'll open the meeting for public comment. Kevin, you still don't have anyone there?
I have one person here. No public comment.
Okay, so members that are on the Zoom meeting, if you have a public comment, go ahead and raise your little hand on your screen if you know where to find it. If you don't, go ahead and unmute yourself and start speaking and state your name first with your address and you have three minutes. All right, I don't see anybody raising their hand. All right, good meeting tonight. I just have one thing I just want to say out to everybody. I just wanted to recognize the citizens that came out and helped with the house fire that happened this weekend. I know that was a big deal and I think that really shows to the type of community members that we have in this town that people in the face of fire will literally pick up a hose to help their neighbor and it makes me really proud to live in a community like that where your neighbors are willing to jump in like that. That's a, that's a big deal. And we need more volunteers on the fire department, so I hope those people come pick up an application. But and I wanted to also say that that gratitude is not just for the citizens that jumped in, but it's also for the police officers. I know Officer Davidson stepped in, one of inbound firefighters showed up. So thank you guys. It's, I just can't thank you guys enough for stepping in. We need, we always need lots of people like that in a small community. So thank you, guys. It's um I just can't thank you guys enough for stepping in. We need, we always need lots of people like that in a small community. Counselor Kenyon, did you have something?
Yes, I just wanted to ask if we have an executive schedule, executive session scheduled for tonight.
Thank you for bringing that up and I forgot to mention that we do, we have one on the agenda as a placeholder, but um unfortunately, we don't have um meeting tonight, but we will have one at our next regular council meeting. We will have an executive session.
Okay.
Anything else? All right.
I'd just like to say thanks to the council for the good conversation tonight. It's much appreciated from staff.
Yeah, and good job on your guys' budget meetings, too. All right, thank you, guys. Have a great night. Uh meeting adjourned at eight fifty-two.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night.